The 33rd meeting of the 21st Council will come to order. Everyone is here tonight. Councillor Lewis has been excused. Councillor Weller will be late coming to the meeting, but he will be here tonight. Councillor Bennet.
Thanks, President. And also, just for the record, Councillor Sanchez is also sponsoring this legislation. We didn't get his name on it in time for it to get into the bill book that way. But I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing our 169 on tonight's agenda for final action. Our 169 is reporting the city of Albuquerque and the U.C.'s construction in the area of Rio Grande Bosque, the Central Avenue and I-40, and amending the capital implementation program in the city of Albuquerque by approving new projects and changing the scope of existing programs.
Second? It has been moved in second. Thank you, Councillors Bennet and Sanchez. This requires a vote. Two-thirds as a council president. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Both no. That passes. We are now under the panel of the comments. We have a number of people that are allowed to speak tonight. We're also very fortunate to have a colleague, Commissioner Denny O'Malley, to speak with us. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm also here to support the bill to stop, I would say, bulldozing the Bosque. The whole idea of working with the Sierra Club, my understanding is the mayor was working, or his people were working with the Sierra Club and other folks to come up with a plan, a consensus plan, on how to move forward with some of the changes to the Bosque. And this, my understanding of what happened, is that all of a sudden, the mayor and order by us, the departments or whatever, to go in there and start tearing up and building this trail. This was a plan that was not agreed to, and that is incredibly disrespectful. The Bosque belongs to all of us, and it's a living river. I think that's important to understand. This is a living river. It's got its own ecosystem, and I think people appreciate Albuquerque. This isn't San Antonio. This isn't a ditch that was made into some sort of feature. This is a living river, and we have to be understanding of how people feel about it. And it has an enormous value to us, and along with the city system, let's not mess it up. And I support your bill that you're sponsoring, Councillor Bennet and Councillor Sanchez, to stop destroying the Bosque. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm sure you'll agree with Councillor O'Malley, Commissioner O'Malley, before you leave. I think for sure Councillor Bennet will agree.
Just quickly, Commissioner O'Malley, thanks for coming down to speak, and I appreciate your support with regard to the Bosque. Go ahead. Hello, my name is Michael Jensen. I'm the Middle Rio Grande Urban Waters Ambassador for the Urban Waters Federal Partnership. I also sit on the Open Space Advisory Board. I want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself tonight, not for those agencies. However, I do know that Open Space and the advisory board are repeatedly frustrated by the fact that agencies that do work in the Bosque don't consult fully and completely with them on the scope and scale of their work. So it's kind of disconcerting that the mayor initiated a project that did not consult with Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District over a special use permit. I myself personally have gotten two of those to collect water samples on conservancy property with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, or with the New Mexico Environment Department Service for Equality Bureau over things relevant to their purview. And most importantly, because this area of the project is larger than one and deeper of disturbed land, they failed to consult with the EPA legal assistance office in Dallas for a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit. They didn't do a notice of intent under the construction general permit. So they're technically in violation there. As I said, this failure to consult is setting a bad precedent for the Open Space and the city to go back to some of these same agencies and fault them for not consulting adequately. And I'm sort of reminded of Councillor Sanchez's effort last year to reaffirm the Bosque Action Plan, which called for better consultation among all the agencies doing work, something that was vetoed by the mayor. And lastly, talking to the contractor and other people in the city, I understand there's a bridge being priced out, and maybe it already has, to go over the site, and I hope there's a consultation about that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'm Camille Fiebelman, a director of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club, which represents 4,000 members in the Albuquerque area. I think it's good to just remember what the Bosque is all about. Albuquerque is one of the only cities that's protected the forested area along its river in the entire country. We have the largest cottonwood forest in the entire country. So this is a really special place, and our Bosque Action Team is dedicated to increasing access to it, whether it's on the east side or on the west side, but decreasing the harm so that we can all enjoy seeing bird life, wildlife, and enjoying a really unique river. We got off to a pretty rough start with the city on the Rio Grande vision. They put the project out to decor parish in Sabatini, and they came back with a real manicured plan. This was going to be kind of an urban park rather than the natural place that it is. The city put on public hearings in September of 2013. 400 people showed up, and there was a resounding no, this isn't what we want. Now, to the city's credit, they slowed down, and they really started listening. The plan between Central and I-40 was something that we met multiple times with them on. We went on walks with the city. And last Monday, the ninth, we received from city employees three maps with three options, asking for our feedback for the public process. On Tuesday, we went down there to check out the area, look at the map, look at the area, and they had started work with heavy machinery. Now, my job is to get the public to engage in the public process and trust the city, saying, yeah, we're willing to work with these guys. So those of you who are here in support of the Bosque and engaged in that process, please stand up. These are the folks that I promised to engage with the city. On Tuesday, that trust was bolstered. Thank you.
Camille, thank you for speaking. So I have the impression, and first, if I'm wrong, that there had been a lot of progress towards these three final plans, I suppose, and also was I the impression that there was going to be a limited number of more meetings and a decision made on that?
I think we were two weeks from a consensus decision with the city. I mean, I believe, plus the city, we were getting there, we were looking at maps together, they were asking for our feedback. We gave on the concept of a wider trail in certain areas, but we asked, especially in the area at the waterfront, be protected, because that's sort of the most sensitive area, it's area for nesting. But that area got plowed through to the tune of eight feet. The ultimate trail will probably be six feet, the bed is eight feet. Now, I have contacted the mayor's office and Ms. Barbara Taylor not less than five times and haven't heard a word back. So, you know, we were getting emails about maps on Monday and no response on Tuesday. We would like to continue working with the city. We're happy to start over.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just to follow up on Councillor Bennet's question, I am 100% sure that if we had been able to continue that process, that we would have come to a consensus plan that everybody could have agreed to for the trail that is in the Bosque. It would have been a multi-use trail. We would not have had as heavy a footprint in the Bosque as the trail that's being constructed now, but we would have come to a consensus option that could have been, considered that could have been built. Unfortunately, because the mayor went in there and, or my excuse, because that trail was passed through the Bosque, that ability to come to a consensus was cut off. The disagreement in this case, I think, really is about what our vision for the Rio Grande Valley State Park and the Bosque is. Is the Bosque going to be a city park with developed features, where when you go there, it feels more like you're in a city park? Or is it going to be a natural space, where you can go to enjoy the beauty of the river, and the cottonwoods, and the birds, and where you feel more like you're in a natural space? That's what I think the real question is here. The trail that is being constructed now is going to be an obvious, developed feature in the Bosque. It will be a uniform width, it will be a smooth surface, a perfect metal surface, kind of a groomed surface, covered in crusher fines that are different from the surrounding soil, and it will be an obvious, developed feature. It will be out of character with what the Bosque really is. The thing that makes the Bosque a special and unique place, and a place that so many people love, is that it is a place right within the city where you can go and enjoy nature. Projects in the Bosque should preserve this natural character. The trail that's being built now, we're going to do that. Thank you, Ms. Fiebelman.
Thank you, Mr. President and councillors. My name is Gail Garber, and I am the director of Hoxaloft here in Albuquerque, a nonprofit for 21 years. We've monitored birds in the Bosque since 2004, from Rio Rancho to La Jolla State Game Refuge. And I want to say, talk about the tale of three cities. So our data show us that Rio Rancho, with a wide crusher fine trail on the riverside, similar to that thing installed now in the city of Albuquerque, supports the lowest density of all habitats in the riparian zone of all seven miles. It's even less than Pierce fans of salt seeder. The Corral's Bosque, on the other hand, has the highest density of birds and variety of species of all habitats within the entire beach, particularly in areas along the riverbank where the bank has been lowered and they plan to willow swale. Just last spring, one year after they did their riparian restoration, we found 15 well-clotcatchers and endangered species on the full survey of the year. This is an astounding number, not even found in pristine habitat in the port of the range. Corralis has been recognized as an important bird area by Audubon Society. It was, the Bosque of Corralis was featured in New Mexico Magazine. We collaborated with the city of Albuquerque throughout the process and attended the walks. One of our recent suggestions to Open Space was to create similar patches with lower banks and willow swales immediately adjacent to the river where the trail is now being expanded. We even included funding suggestions to help establish a premier wetland and riparian woodland in the midst of the city. River's edge is the Bosque. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Diana Mays, followed by Jennifer Potts, followed by Don Trader.
Mr. President and councillors, my name is Diana Mays, and I'm a member with ALA. I'm here today to urge you guys to vote yes for our 169, in the hopes that my daughter would be able to walk through the Bosque in its natural habitat the way I was when I was growing up. I want her to be able to pave through Bosque on the dirt paths that thousands of people before us paved, not on crusher fine that's essentially damaging our ecosystem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jennifer Potts, followed by Don Trader, followed by Father Frank and Ben.
Mr. President and councillors, I come before you tonight, and I want to first thank Councillor Sanchez and Bennet for introducing this legislation. And I want to also urge the rest of you to do the right thing later when you vote. We need, we need to stand up for a lot of things in this city, and I think that the legislation concerning the Bosque is one of many. We need to be better than we are, and we need leadership shown from city council, because to a lot of us, it's not coming from city hall at this time. I can also say that on behalf of cyclists, with regard to Bosque plans and improvements, that crusher fines may or may not be good for any field vehicles. They can turn out to be a relatively good surface to ride on, or to have a wheelchair or stroller, but too often, they don't. And so without really understanding what this plan is about, what's going on, we're not, we're not supportive of it, because all too often, it makes driving impossible. And it wouldn't be conducive to a wheelchair. They run about the same kind of tire or wheel that a bicycle, road bicycle does. And so I want you to consider that as well, that it may be a bit disingenuous to say that these improvements are for the populations. To my knowledge, the Greater Albert Bicycle Committee hasn't been consulted about this plan either, so there's been no bicycle input, to my knowledge, about the dis- crusher fine situation. And last, you know, I'm an Albuquerque native, the Bosque has been a really unique, beautiful part of my, my time in the city, and we, we need to protect it. We need to protect it in its natural state and not make it into a theme park. Just thinking.
Thank you very much. Mr. President and councillors, thank you for the opportunity. I want to focus on the extremely flawed process leading up to these outrageous actions instigated by the mayor. The Bosque Action Team, as was earlier stated, mailed out, was mailed out different options on this project and how to proceed, but almost immediately, the Leescape's company began the destruction work on the Bosque Trail. It was almost like a deliberate insult. The work actually began on last Monday, on April, February the ninth, but even the city's Open Space staff didn't learn about it until the next day. Ms. Barbara Taylor, the new director, brand new director of Parks and Recreation, recklessly neglected to even advise the MRGCD, the Rio Grande Conservancy District, or the EPA, that she was planning this work, even though she was obligated to do so. She told me that there has already been enough public input, and that she will move forward with this hasty, ill-conceived, and uncalled-for project. Because of this badly breached trust, which I think she, as I said before, at the instigation the mayor has caused, I call on Ms. Barbara Taylor to resign as a director of Parks and Recreation towards the city of Albuquerque. And if she refuses to do so, I implore the city council to facilitate her resignation or removal as director. Albuquerque and the Bosque deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councillors. I come to speak in support of the Bosque, and to thank Isaac Bennet for putting this issue in front of the council tonight. First of all, what's being built there, it's a road. It's an ugly, gravel road. And the work that's been done in the past few days has done more destruction to the Bosque than all of the traffic, probably for millennia, over one of these so-called road paths. And I think that term is being used by the mayor, making it sound like, you know, terrible things are going on, and that paths are being developed willy-nilly through the, through the Bosque. I see all manner of people, bicycles, strollers, on the current path. There is no lack of access for anybody. And the Bosque is beautiful as is, and this road that is being built is, is just ugly. You feel bad under defeat. Cyclists are saying that they don't think it's going to be any good for them, and therefore not any good for, for people in wheelchairs. And it occurs to me, considering the other issue that's been being spoken about this evening, what a waste. This city is spending money to destroy the Bosque while people are homeless and starving. Thank you.
Followed by Sarita Spass, followed by Oscar Simpson.
David had to leave the asking to read his first paragraph and give the second half to me again.
All right.
David writes, "I am one of many citizens who is outraged by your premature decision to begin trail construction work in the Bosque before finishing a legitimate public review. That work could have been completed in a more ecologically friendly way if you had let the review process run its course. For example, the most biologically and ecologically friendly areas are immediately adjacent to the river, the riparian zone. The Southwest has already bossed about 70% of its biologically rich and productive riparian zones. We should be restoring, not destroying, our precious riparian zones. Yet, a portion of the newly graded trail runs adjacent to the river. This is ecologically unacceptable." And this is Maya, she's six. She goes to Humbert Elementary Elementary.
Welcome, Maya. Thank you, Maya. It's my honor to thank you very much. Councillor Bennet.
Um, Ms. Fiebelman?
Uh, Ms. Fiebelman? And Maya?
Well, I just want to say, good job, Maya. And Ms. Fiebelman, I just had a couple of questions. When you spoke earlier, you had said that you were two weeks away from consensus, so I'm hearing a lot of different things here tonight, like that the crusher fine is not an acceptable, an acceptable material for the Bosque, but it seems as though maybe that was something that you had identified as being acceptable. What, what, what's the difference between the two weeks coming from consensus? Like here, is it going to be a developed park, a trail at the river, adjacent to the riverbed, and then I've heard others talk about the crusher fine?
You know, I think that the biggest issue is one of nuance. The trail that was plowed through last week is a standard eight-foot-wide trail bed for a six-foot-wide trail, and I've walked a whole thing from Central to I-40. And what it doesn't do is sort of pay attention to each particular system. So what Dr. Person is saying is, the riparian area right in front of the river is the most sensitive. So what we were talking about with the city is, if you are feeling very insistent on a multi-use trail, let's do that where it's set back from the riverfront. Let's do it in a way that the bikes aren't going to spook the horses. If it's going to be an ADA trail, which we highly favor, let's make sure to consult the community first and see what a good distance from parking to riverfront is for somebody in a wheelchair. And what we talked about was keeping a very narrow trail system in the riparian area. Forest service documents show that you can have quite a narrow trail that's still wheelchair accessible, but keep the impacts low on nesting areas that are closest to the river. So, you know, on Monday, when we got these three maps, the city was sort of saying, this, these are three maps with a series of options that we want your feedback on and that we could take to public comment. So when you put those three options up for public review, the different communities can come in and say, the scientists can say, six foot wide in front of the river doesn't work. The ADA community can come in and say, crusher fine's okay, but this works better. And all of that feedback, we would have gotten through a public comment period that we were expecting from the city.
Okay. So summarily, the trail, from my understanding, went from six feet to larger, and it was an existing trail. So this six-foot trail that's adjacent to the river was already there?
It was a small, narrow footpath. So let's say that this is the narrow footpath that's there now, is like this. So it's the, the area literally two to three feet from the river is totally exposed, it's been graded and leveled, and it is absolutely not what we would have recommended from a scientific standpoint. And that's what we were talking about with the city. If you're going to insist on a wide trail, where can we do that with low impact, and how can we protect the riverfront riparian zone?
Well, it does. I mean, the, the trail was already there, and for me, part of the struggle that I have is that I've made this very clear before when I've talked to a couple from the Sierra Club, is that, you know, the river is a precious resource, and, you know, the initial plan that was out there, I totally was opposed to it when we talked about making it an urban park. I think the administration pulled back, and they really listened to, to the community, and really felt that you guys were, you know, everybody was working together. For me, and as I mentioned, talking about this before, is that I have a, I have a family member who has disability, and I have another individual who's in a wheelchair. And unfortunately, for years and years, us as a family, we go down to the river, very often, we're in bikes and on the trails. And when we walk in the Bosque, it's been very, I've felt for years, it's been very safe, unsafe. It's not somewhere where I could take my brother or, or this other individual who's in a wheelchair. So, you know, I was really hopeful that, because you said you were two weeks away from consensus, that, you know, the crusher fine must have been something that was identified as an acceptable material. And, and the fact that the trail was already there, which is, I'm, I'm really appreciative that the option one was selected, because those other options were, they would just create new trails. And I had, as I had mentioned before, a lot of, a lot of the trails that were there were just made because you couldn't really find your way around there, so you kind of, and really that was harming the environment tremendously, I believe. But, so I just wanted to, to ask what really kept you away from the two, from consensus and what made such a drastic change?
Well, it's just such an odd thing. I mean, we got these three maps, asking for feedback from the city, from the staff at the Open Space Department on Monday, asking for our feedback. And when we got it down on Tuesday and found that the work had already been started, we stopped getting any phone calls back. So we understood that we were at the table together, and we understood that the three maps that we had been sent were going to be the basis for the last part of the conversation. We had looked at the maps that Monday night at the Bosque Action Team meeting. There was a feeling that a combination of options one and two would be the best way to move forward. We really agree with the idea of using existing trails, but to turn a footpath into an eight-foot-wide bed in a six-foot-wide trail in the most sensitive area is just not appropriate. The other thing that we're concerned about is that in no document, in no map, and in no discussion with the city, was this trail ever identified as a possible ADA trail. Now, it might be a great ADA trail, and we'd like to see functional ADA trails within the Bosque, but as the woman who spoke before me said, you really have to get members of the ADA community together to see what's needed and what works. There's a difference between pushing an elderly relative in a wheelchair and trying to self-propel. The person who will speak after me is a member of the Bosque Action Team. She did what I understand to be some of the only studies of what ADA accessibility to the Bosque would look like, and was the person bringing this to the city. So I think what you'll find right now is that for us, we, we have wanted to be at the table, we commend the city for starting over. We want to see increased accessibility, but we want to do it the right way. One thing that David Person said in his document here is, you know, why rush this in before nesting season? Why not take this period of time that we have now to really look at the three options and see the proper option that works for most parties after nesting season, so that we're not rushing and making mistakes along the way?
Councillor Bennet.
Mr. President, without any, any outbursts, I'd just like to ask Mr. Moncaño. So where are we with this? I mean, is there any way to come to some...
I mean, is there any way to come to some agreement in terms of how we address the concerns of the community? Because two weeks out seems, you know, I'm pretty relatively short period of time to arrive at consensus. So it seems as though much of the consensus had been, been made. So if you can just kind of add?
Sure. Mr. President, Counselor, Mr. Rintz actually kind of sticks down with that.
Thank you, Counselor. President Argino and Counselor Pena for the question. We had gone through a two-year review process on this project, and through that process, I think we had come to a consensus where we felt it presumably is going to be a ten-foot trail, it was going to be a longer portion of the long river. That had been reduced to a six-foot trail along an existing footpath. I, I think a lot of the consensus has already occurred. So really, you know, every time you get to the point, we'd already delayed a year, last year, outside of the migrant burn season, with this environmental study that came back positive, saying it should be in the Bosque too. It is a man-made environment that we need to continue to maintain that way. And, and we just continue to get delayed, whether it's two hours, two days, two weeks, two months, another two years. It's, it means we're just going to stay where we're in consensus, because it wasn't tracking that.
Mr. President, Counselor Pena, may I respond?
Yes, sure.
On September 13, four hundred people turned out to a public hearing regarding the city's proposal. I have rarely seen such a turnout to a public hearing. And there was a resounding no to the proposal of broad, wide trails through the Bosque. People run into each other, the multiple uses don't work together, and as Gail Garber said, it's bad for bird populations. The city invited us to a new process, and we appreciate that. But if you don't tell us to sit down with you at the table, and after we leave slam the door, behind us, we're happy to continue working with the city. We were almost there with Open Space staff. So this idea that there had been two years of public meetings, well, the first half of that didn't consult organizations that actually worked with the Bosque, with the public. The second half was a two-year process, and we really appreciate that. But to imply that there's been a two-year process with the consultation is just not true.
Counselor Pena. Next is Sarita Strang, followed by Oscar Simpson, followed by Chad Pooh.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counselors. I, I am, my name's Sarita Strang, and I'm a member of the Bosque Action Team. I'm also the leader of the Bosquetos, which is the group of the Bosque Action Team that volunteers to take children and families at no cost to the Bosque. We've collaborated with the Native France Society, the BioParc Aquarium, the Bosque Eco-Monitoring Project. In addition to that, I personally have a background in teaching people with physical disabilities who've become partially paralyzed due to strokes, spinal cord injury, or other cause, how to return to community mobility. For example, after someone's had a spinal cord injury, I teach them how to use a public restroom again, how to go grocery shopping. I recently, I was finishing occupational therapy graduate school, and I decided for my volunteer project to do a study on ADA access to the Bosque, which I started over a year ago. And it's a, I went to every single space in the Bosque. And I also surveyed a number of people, twelve people who are wheelchair users, who maybe familiar, just slipped through some of the work, who would like to use the Bosque. The Bosque Action Team greatly supports the ADA community. I believe the ADA community has not been consulted. I've had people in the ADA community who I asked to help with this survey, calling me, saying, why are we not being consulted? I also don't think that anyone who I work with who's a wheelchair user wanted the trail to go through a sensitive, most sensitive riparian area.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Quickly, quick questions, Sarita.
In, in my work as an architect over the years, the Governor's Committee Concerns the Handicap, which now called something else, so that was the old name. But, you know, have, over the years, approved pressure fines, compact, stabilized pressure fines as an accessible surface. But I, I wonder if you would comment, I also think when they analyze that, if you're walking, this is a multi-use path, so it's going to have horse, hooves, and bicycle tires, et cetera, on that same surface. And I, I wonder if that was anything you were encountering?
Honestly, I've heard a variety of opinions on what trail surfaces would be the best. I don't personally know. I think that asking a group of people who are regular wheelchair users to go out and try out different surfaces who live in Albuquerque and would be using the Bosque would be the most prudent thing to do. I also can say that there are a lot of complaints of the people that I spoke with who do use wheelchairs, in terms of things like, why is there this beautiful paved path from the Rio Grande Nature Center? Phenomenal, the out-of-the-lay pole trail is, it's totally paved, it goes through the Bosque. Why can they not get over the levee? There's no way for them to get over their levee and self-propel. And why does that trail not go all the way to the river when it's so close? Why, some of the people that I talked to who do use wheelchairs tried to go to the boardwalk that's just south of Central at this time and got stuck in sand pits? So I think that some of the areas that already have some access don't really have access, if that makes sense. And I think that's another reason to not jump into doing this project immediately. And as the person who was representing the disability community here earlier, I think there needs to be more outreach. And I feel like, you know, the Bosque Action Team needs a hundred-hour study to try and reach out as volunteers. I think we really care, and we love the Bosque, and we want people of all abilities to be able to enjoy the Bosque. And we don't think that has to mean that we have to also go into the most sensitive nesting grounds.
Thank you.
And the study is on our website.
Thank you. Next is Oscar Simpson, followed by Chad Pooh, followed by Stephen Chavis.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city councils. My name is Oscar Simpson. I've worked since a couple of years. I represent the Backcountry Horsemen of New Mexico. I represent the Backcountry Hunters of New Mexico. The city's response tonight is a titanic snap, why we need to stop this project. We have no public process. The city makes arbitrary, arbitrary decisions on what is good and what is suitable. The public process has failed. There's been lots of promises. I've been watching this stuff for the last two, three, two years. I was also on Secretary Sados' task force evaluating trail from Cochise down to Elephant Lake. We had lots of public process, lots of expertise. The city of Albuquerque has advocated the whole process, and we think there are numerous processes. Therefore, that's why I support Resolution 15169. And the city, I'm bitten, I'm your assistant, and I support this very much. And I hope the rest of the city council follows this through. The city advocated its process, and that's the reason why you need to stop this, they need to start all over. Thank you very much.
President, Counselors, my name is Leila Sam, and I represent the downtown millennial group. Last year, we met with Mayor and Detective Har17 to discuss the redevelopment vision. And we were largely in agreement with the essence of the mayor's vision, that the Bosque needs ecological restoration efforts, that it's a place we enjoy and want others to enjoy, that the more we use it, the more we'll care about it, because the more it will be cared for, and that low-end improvements can be made to retain the natural quality. You should have my letter in front of you. Last Saturday, we held a cleanup event called I Heart the Bosque, where, you know, the sixty of us spent the morning of Valentine's Day to clean up trash and painting over graffiti. Like many others, we were alarmed to hear that construction began on the trail without warning. To be clear, we're not against developments. We want to see improved paths, educational signage, and local ecological restoration. We recognize the Bosque's potential for tourism, generating economic development, and contributing to the attractiveness of Albuquerque. We believe it's one of the most unique features of our city and an important memory for millennials and others who choose to move here or remain here. Our generation values communication. We need to be heard about construction via social media, but we heard nothing from the city about why it's happening without regard to the other discussions. We feel that political dialogue is often integrated and polarized, and we want to see innovation in this area, communication. We have some ideas for better civic engagement, and we're already having meetings with the Corporate America team about that. Our generation also values honesty, and many of our peers are wary of that, and a lot of them don't even vote. And they're wary of the political process, because actions like those of last week reinforce this unfortunate trust. So we urge you to restore the public process and ensure that the rest of the project will be done in accordance with the knowledge and needs of all stakeholders.
Thank you, Ms. Leila. I, I just wanted to ask, I guess, so you're saying that we need to find out about this until it has started, discussions going backwards, if you will, until the social media alerted people?
Right. Well, social media was where almost everyone heard about it first, I would say.
So what does that say about every other category?
Well, I think the rest of the media, there's some, there's some great lappes in other places, but the Journal seems to be on the side of the administration, and this has provided no other perspective.
So after the fact, reporting is not that great?
Not at all, and it hasn't actually provided any explanations to why the process was not, was not effective.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Cross, followed by Linda Starr, followed by Sue Penn.
Hello, my name is Sharon Cross, and I was staffed with the city council from 1974 to 1980, when it began. And I am here to speak about public trust, because I'm not on the Bosque Action Team, but I am in part of this process. And I am really disturbed, because I want to trust the government, and it isn't working for me right now. And I think this is a bigger issue than just the Bosque. So I commented on the environmental monitoring statement in December, and it didn't have a scope of the project. It didn't, it wasn't precise. And I said, how can you tell what the environmental impact is if you don't even know what the scope of the project is? I went on the city's Open Space Walk in January, and it was very educational. Again, there was no specific proposal put to me as a member of the public on the walk. But I saw some things on the walk. I saw two porcupines in a tree. The city Open Space staff said that it was really important for the regeneration of the cottonwoods, so we have wet areas. They also said that it was very important that we not disturb the riverfront, because that was the very sensitive area for the birds. And they talked about having access, but restoration and environmental conservation. And I think there was discussion of the fact that you can kill the Bosque by overdoing it. And if we destroy it, it's not going to be there. So I asked for rebuilding the public trust by supporting Counselor Benton's resolution and getting the public back into the process. Thank you.
Linda Starr, followed by Sue Penn, followed by our last speaker, Marsha McKeen.
Hello, there, Counselors. I'm Linda Starr, and I'm just speaking from the heart. I've lived in the South Valley for twenty-five years. I've lived in Albuquerque for forty years, over forty years. And I want to thank Mr. Benton for his resolution and for stopping construction, hopefully stopping construction in the Bosque. My son grew up along the Bosque, we picnicked along the Bosques. I've hiked probably a hundred miles along the Bosque in different parts of it, with the Albuquerque seniors' centers hiking groups. And we enjoy looking at the birds, the wildlife, the porcupines, the occasional coyotes even running through Bosque. And I don't want to see nature suffer what does for the take of development along the Bosque. I think that nature is important for our spirits, for our hearts, and, and we cannot let this go and, and develop nature. So we need to appreciate what's there for our hearts, for our spirits. Thank you.
Next is Sue Penn, followed by our last speaker, Marsha McKeen.
Good evening, I'm Sue Penn, and I'm a homeowner, taxpayer at Central States. I'm here again after three years, listening to everybody behind me speak about the Bosque. I think that everything they've said is correct, and I think common sense is what rules. And destroying the Bosque is something that is not acceptable to anybody, especially not under plans that are strictly for development. This is a state park, this is a national treasury, everybody knows the mayor is nothing but a commercial developer. The mayor, and everything that he has done, and he was a state representative in the legislation, he was told no. He was not given money. He was told that these projections of five hundred thousand people that he just said on this, the overhaul he refused, planning, five hundred thousand people are going to be here within twenty years. Oh, God, I want to be alive in twenty years, probably. But who is he to say that we start changing everything now, for twenty years from now? How does he know that's going to happen? We have no resources. We don't have any money, we don't have any jobs, yet he's ready to spend $1.5 million for hacking Councilwoman Jones and Mr. Benton for planning to get rid of zoning and coating the way that it is. This is to cover their rear ends over what I have brought before you for three years. I spoke to Mr. Conrad, followed my third formal complaint with Mr. Brito, and I have given you every deductive argument that I have, which means my evidence is yours. It is public documents, it is public testimony. Mr. Winter, I asked him to step down, because if I had eaten the bacchus, the information that I had on the redistricting and what this has done to the city based on this administration, they would have won their lawsuit. The person we had didn't get a good attorney, but they're all hired by the mayor at one point. So there's always a conflict of interest. This administration and this planning department and everything in it needs to be stopped and looked at. And I has today spoke to the Attorney General, because I'm done with it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Isaac Benton, and Counselors. My name is Marsha, and I am from Borrelas. There's been a lot of talk already about the tent city, so I will leave that out of this and make it short and sweet. The only methadone clinic that I know of in Albuquerque is way up by the airport and not accessible. I would ask for one downtown. The drugs and problems in tent city, those people need help. And after having worked in a methadone clinic, I know that they're not all bad. They have, they're human beings, and they have no resources. They're lost people. As far as Borrelas Cove, I think it should be declared under historic preservation. It's a beautiful, old neighborhood, and at one time, I understand, it was thriving, and it needs to thrive again. I also, you know, I'm all aware, behind halfway housing, and also I would suggest a work-study program. There are all kinds of things that people can learn. I work with development, I've been delaying people before, they have jobs, many of them can work. And I also understand that a substantial amount was cut from, that was slated for the Workforce Trust Fund. I was given the names of Counselor Harris, Lewis, Jones, and Winter, who were asking for that cut. And I want it back. I think we need it, and we have a crisis with Borrelas. And the last thing is, we're only as strong as our weakest link. And the last thing is, we're only as strong as our weakest link. Um, these people need help. And I don't believe that.
Thank you. Your point is, uh, thank you very much. Everybody, I'm sure, is, uh, ready for some questions. Well, the questions that we're taking, they're thirty, uh, to answer. Thank you very much.
Wake up, Robbie. City's in crisis.